To start the meeting of the board supervisors for January 25th, 2024. We'll start the vote call. Chief, please, Matthew Brown.
Tom should introduce Mr. Baker.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Hornigat, Assistant Attorney.
Bob Hart, Assistant Attorney.
Sean Kilkeny, Solicitor.
Ashley DeBiro, Supervisor.
Vice Chair Dennis DeSanto.
Morgan Harris, Supervisor.
Kevin McDavid, Chairman of the Board.
Kevin McDavid, Chairman of the Board. Let's rise to the Pledge of the Equals.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with the name of this world.
Okay, next item is swearing in of new officers. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to invite Dylan Maddox up to the front here. Dylan Maddox, who's holding your oath of the bond? Come on up. That's it, just throw my name away.
Can we get a new judge that's younger?
I'll be your attorney. PA, for me, I, Dylan Maddox.
I, Dylan Maddox.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
In and for the township of East Norton.
In and for the township of East Norton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
And the laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
And that I will faithfully carry out my duties.
And that I will faithfully carry out my duties.
Of patrol officer.
As patrol officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Further.
Further.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
I could have the birthday boy from the baby. All right, Mr. Miller, can you come on up?
Police left down there, raise your hand for me. PA, for me, I, Nathaniel Miller.
I, Nathaniel Miller.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
Having been appointed as patrol officer.
In and for the township of East Norton.
In and for the township of East Norton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The Pennsylvania Constitution.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
And the laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
And that I will faithfully carry out my duties.
And I will faithfully carry out my duties.
Of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Further.
Further.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Without consideration of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Okay. Next is the Service Awards.
Yes.
For years of service awards, so according to the recent Bureau of Labor Statistics, 22% of employees leave their jobs within one year of starting their job. 50% leave within four years. Tonight, the police officers standing, or will be standing in front of you, are the exceptions. This award that we're going to be handing out acknowledges these officers' commitment to East Norton Township. So tonight, we're going to recognize officers' years of completed service in five-year increments, and I'm going to call them up in those five years. Five years is going, the first group of five years of completed service is going to start with Sergeant Ryan Minkie. Officer Nicolette DiGiazio. Officer Samantha Kason. For 10 years, for a decade, we have Deputy Chief Thomas Douglas. And Sergeant Orlando Hoaden. Fifteen-year Sergeant Joel Omen. Officer Timothy Warner. Twenty years, myself. Sergeant Joseph Harper. Officer Barry Lapooton. Fourth century of service, we have Lawrence Thompson. The township thanks you for your exceptional contributions, loyalty, and unwavering dedication. Thank you very much.
Everybody, please.
He just only has three years.
Squeeze it in.
Nice meeting you.
A pleasure to meet you. Take care, darling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
I just want to say that we met for executive session.
My husband's standing there.
Perfect, is a lead agent. Next group.
I told him, I said, I said, get him to bow 20 after 7:00.
Clap for me, Mr. Parker.
Yes, I did, yes, I did. Yes, I did. I know, certainly did clap.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the regularity of meeting minutes for May 28th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Senator Sam, Senator, Senator Hornigat, Senator McDavid. I, closed. I, Karen. Citizens be heard. Do we have any citizens that we heard? Okay. Come up to the podium, come up to the podium here. Give us your name and address.
My name is Eugene McLaughlin. I'm at 2926 White Hill Road, East Norton. My reason in here is that, I came here in August of 2022 to have you get a little bit of, I visited here, I gave a documentation about why our rates went up 62%. And I only use, well, I only use well, this better. And then, excuse me, the sentence is went up 22, 62%. And my gave a documentation, I'm a big gentleman here. He sent me a document. Here it is, a year and a half later, you finally found the top of that thing. What happened? There's no reason in the world why anybody should have their water rates increased 62% because then again, another increase comes in short. You guys are doing nothing about it. Why?
Are we talking about the water or the sewer?
So I think, we have water is, I really, I think you're talking about the sewer, Aqua, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the sewer, not the water, but I can give you an update here.
Yeah, let's hear the update.
We discussed it, we've discussed it probably 20 times here at meetings.
Well, I went to the PUC.
Yeah.
And after three lawyers and a statistician, I didn't have a prayer.
Just so, so, give you a little background, that, from the first increase, that is still going on, we are.
I know, I have a bill.
Can you let Mr. Hart finish?
The township is a party to that as well. It's on behalf of the residents of the township. Additionally, the township is in litigation with Aqua over the agreement with them, trying to hold them, suing them to hold them accountable and to the rate structure that they proposed. So we are, and we've been, we give updates every other meeting here about that litigation. Additionally, with this new one which you received, I mean, we've all received it in the past few weeks, about another increase that they plan to go to the PUC. That is on the agenda tonight for the board to vote, to send the solicitor to oppose that and to fight that as well. So we are in the courts right now with this and have been now for a couple of years, more than two years. So that, that's where we are. And as you know from doing it, it's a slow grind, a slow process.
But sir, we are, we are trying to fight, legally, we're trying to fight it. I mean, there is.
I can't understand why everybody else has a meter for usage. I asked them why they don't, they said they don't have it.
Who doesn't?
Aqua says they do not have to have a meter when you're out. The phones, the electric, gas, everybody has meters. These people don't have to have a meter? What's wrong with that?
So what it is, it's not just here, that's everywhere. So this sewer bill is based off your water bill from a PA American Water.
But I don't have one. Somebody doesn't have water.
You, so they give you a minimum, they give you.
They screw it, that's what they do.
Excuse me?
They screw it, that's what they do. They discard a trailer, throw out something, and say, hey.
They do do a minimum.
And you only gain a tank.
They do do a minimum with wells, truly. I mean, we, that we have, we don't have that many in our township. Some townships are a lot, as you can imagine. But you're, you're correct, you're correct about that. If you have a well, it's, you're in a much different situation. Now, they, I, I can say this, we had approached them about metering on that, so that's something I can reach out again when it comes to wells, because they put a metering situation in place for filling up holes. Go, go hard, man. So I, I can, if I can.
I want to meter all my sewers, not my, my well, what do I know? I pay for that. I don't, I don't need to use their water.
There's no way to meter a sewer, Mr. McLaughlin. There's a way to, there's a way to meter water.
Right.
But there's no way to meter sewage.
Then how can they, how can they?
An arbitral is 62%.
Increase.
So what I can say is, I can, if you provide me your information, I will try to find an answer for the well situation. I haven't been to before, and I don't know, but I will be glad to have our attorneys. This is all with our attorneys, I will absolutely be glad to see what we can come out with.
So you need all legal jargon too, from the lawyers that kept sending me information over and over again, pages and pages and pages?
This is Mr. Kilkeny's office, not, not those attorneys. This is, this is the township's.
Who do you need for that?
Your name, contact information, and I will be in contact there. Our lawyers will get to it, we'll be reaching out within days.
Then I'd come back down to the jury, give you my name and address.
You can give it to us right now, if you want to come over before we leave already. Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to.
All right.
Okay, I can do that. Okay, thank you.
It's your name and address.
One of the locations, 2111 Broadway Avenue. First and foremost, I would like to be back. I don't know, it's a whole business, I should be good, but over there. I would like to know, last time I was here, I was thinking about the abandoned wrecked vehicle that sits in the back of my, someone who's parked in my township, is still sitting there with a truck on it, and I was trying to find out, is it a good thing?
They, 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 we went through our police who ran that, ran the information. We are in the process of having that removed. We also have posted a half a dozen vehicles, as you talked about down at the end of that, of your Broadway, with abandoned markings, where they only have a certain amount of days now to move them. We gave, we've worked with these owners, tried to give them every opportunity to move them without, you know, our goal isn't to give people our time, it is, but residents like yourself don't deserve to live with those, with that, that kind of environment. And, you know, six vehicles on our lawn that are rusted out, so they have, like I said, I think a half a dozen have been, two more are about to be, there was a timeframe that they had to meet. And I don't know the update on the wrecked vehicle in there, but we absolutely address it, I can get that for you, I just don't know that.
And one more thing. This is involved in the kids' playground. They're out there at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning with their head like it's on, playing basketball. So I guess just asking the police officer if they can kind of man-like they used it because it's summertime. And I'm, you know, and I'm not afraid to say, I call. Because they have no business being out there playing like it's 1:00 in the morning. So if you guys just can kind of come by at that time of morning, and I can guarantee it's not the kids who are with.
In the neighborhood?
In the neighborhood. They're coming from other neighborhoods, and I just don't want anything to happen.
We, I'm sure that you can have a directed patrol go through there and deal with that.
Yeah, I have no problem.
No, sure.
Because they come out during the summertime, but they need to do the surprise visit, you know, like the drive-a-ball, because they're out here.
If I could provide one more, Deputy Chris, you had mentioned you had asked last meeting about the playground equipment and the rubber safer mulch, we just got the, I got it, I had to pick the taller, I mean, it's.
Oh, you should ask me.
We have, these aren't blue, so that's where we're at, so we just, we got samples, we just ordered it, it's all going down, it's definitely, like I said, it'll be, it'll be a major improvement.
Right, since you talked about the playground, I noticed when they do have like barbecues back there, and on Sacramento, you know the streets are small.
Yes.
They're parked on both sides of the street. If we could put a sign that say, don't park on the right, because what happens is, if it's an emergency, you can't get back there. Because if you guys know the streets are one way in, one way out, and they're not that wide. And I'm not talking about every street, I'm talking about the street where the playground is, the both, the one on Sacramento and the other street where you just put a sign that you can't park on that right-hand side, because that's over the weekend, and 4th of July's coming up, and if it's an emergency.
We will, we will go down, I will check it out, we'll send some pictures, and I know Chief and his staff will look into that with our coaches as well.
Okay, thank you. And my complaints are concerned.
But I'm sorry, just like a clarification, because shortly after I came on board, there was a lot of discussion about taking a similar measure on another road in the township, though it's not good for a lot of residents. So, so like, is your suggestion more as a temporary measure, and do we, are we empowered to enforce that, or are you suggesting you would look into a more permanent measure similar to what we've done?
To be honest, I really don't know. Get my dough streaked very well, but I want to get my eyes on that before I know what our options will be, and I will proceed, but you definitely do something.
Four years ago, when I first moved back here, 29 years ago, they had a sign in there. They had, no parking on that right side. I don't know what happened.
We will look into it.
Thank you.
She is correct. I've never seen a sign like that. My name is David Bitterman, I'm a retired police officer from East Norton Township, and I'm here on behalf of the retirees, we had some that were outside and didn't come in because of the COVID, congratulations on our hiring. I want to thank the board, I also want to thank Bob Hart, he sent me a message yesterday at 4:30, unfortunately, I couldn't get back to my apartment, playing basketball games, and my daughter was stuck in Baltimore, when she was supposed to be in Philadelphia, thanks to the American Airlines, who was coming back to Seattle, they lost their luggage, and it was a bad night, so I didn't get back from Baltimore until 2:00 this morning, so. But I want to thank Bob Hart, just to bring this into the board meeting in regard to the message that he sent me, hey, Dave, it's Bob Hart, I added your contact information, so I thought it'd be best to provide the update too. As I, as I'm sure you are aware, the police arbitration award is completed, and the arbitration arbiter chose not to award any type of colon or pension change. That said, as I stated at the last two meetings, now that the arbitration process is over, the board will be reviewing several options over the next couple of weeks to gauge the prudence of the potential pension enhancement, and if so, the best options available. We should have more information regarding your collective request in the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Bob Hart. Thank you very much for reaching out to me, I really appreciate that. And speaking for the members of the police department who are retired, Diane Farrell, somebody you probably know who she is, a lot of you younger folks do not know who she is, her husband retired from the East Norton Police on January, I'm sorry, December 31st of 1989, I had six years on, he was like a father to me when I got come over to the police department, and unfortunately, her retirement benefit is $479. And that's a dark thing to live with, and it's very difficult for her. She has asthma, she just sent me a text message saying that she wouldn't be able to speak here tonight, she wanted to talk to you folks in regard to that. And we have a lot of retirees that are 30-some years out, and one of them is Dick Stevens, who's here tonight, and would like to speak a little bit later in regard to that also. But when we, I had the opportunity to deal on four contracts throughout East Norton's time here to negotiate those contracts, and all those contracts that over the 40 years now, since I've been here and retired, we've always asked for a colon, and it has never been branded to us and, or to the police officers that are working now. And it's demoralizing to see that, because the fact that, you know, and to these day and age, you see all the departments that are around us, quite a few of them have the colon, and they've gotten increases to their colon due to, you know, the economy. And then when you see, I got a message today that one of our state representative senators just voted against a increase for the senior citizens, and you see that, and it's just, you know, it's just sort of a slap in the face. You know, we put in, I put in 33 and a half years, I put in four decades over that period of time. And over those 40 years, we had put in for a colon every time and never got one. And it's, it's demoralizing to us. And we just are asking the board and Bob Hart and Dave Chris to look into the fact that, you know, that we can get that. We'd also like to see if we could get someone on the pension board. When we read the arbitration here, we heard that some of the, you were hearing information that showed due to any actuarial person, you know, and the economist person stating that, you know, how much money that the township is ending through the sewer, I know that doesn't go into the pension. But we were hearing during the arbitration that the pension wasn't reaching benchmarks where they could have been getting more money. And I was, had the fortune of being on the pension board, and Chief replaced me on the pension board, and Gary Stoll, who's been here, and he's outside, but he hasn't come in, and a few other people, due to the people that bring it. But we would like to have the opportunity, because it's our money that was put into there too, to know where our money is going, and possibly sit in on a pension board. I'm retired now from AMI Health, so I did six years with them, and I've been, you know, involved in police work for 37 years, and then six years with security at Vermont Hospital. And, you know, we do have an idea of what's going on in regard to our pension, you know, we're familiar with that, they have another pension coming from, from our hospital for like five years of working there, they decided that they weren't going to give me my six year because of COVID. But, you know, we are looking into the fact that, you know, we just want to have a say in regard to our pension board's contribution also, and I would be more than happy to volunteer for that. And I would be more than happy to volunteer for that over a period of time or, you know, I would, we have an idea as to what's going on with our pension also. And I would greatly consider, you know, be appreciative from the board to take that into consideration. There's a lot of guys that are only getting a little bit of money as a video collection is, you go to the gas station and you have no money left because you filled up your tank and it's close to sixty to a hundred dollars. And it's the same thing at the grocery store. And, you know, we just hope that in the goodness of your heart, you think for us because, you know, we do have those expenses and so will you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gottlieb. I'm here in my capacity as a township resident and not a resident.
What's your address?
Uh, Judge Potter says I don't have to give my address.
Okay.
Okay. Bob Hart knows where I live. All right, so it's close to your department. The reason I'm here today is twofold. Number one, I wanted to thank Bob for initially putting stop signs on throughout our neighborhood. Yeah, the idea was great, but it's not working. Fifty percent of the people who pull through our neighborhood, many of whom were teachers during the school year, and the other half are coming through, are still driving through those stop signs at thirty, forty, fifty miles an hour. My street, we have children. There are children now again, all throughout our neighborhood. It's dangerous. Yes, and speed humps coming back through here. I don't mean these horrible speed bunks, but put some speed humps in throughout the neighborhood and through other neighborhoods in the township. I'm sure there's a cost in that. I for one would pay for one on my street. Because one of these days, one of these kids is getting hit and hurt and it's gonna be by some moron cutting through, or worse yet, a teacher cutting through because they're running late for school or they're running late to go pick their kid up after it's told. Now, the other reason I'm here is for the COLA for the retirees. We have requested a COLA for the retirees as part of the CDA negotiations. The arbitrator correctly, um, in executive session said, I don't have authority to order anything for any retirees. And he's right. And that's why I'm here. Dave McDermott, Dave doesn't remember, but my house was broken into twenty years ago. Dave was the first officer in the door. I was out, I was outside with my wife and Dave and a number of his colleagues, I mean, there were four at the time, hit my door, gave me to ask questions, searched my house, made sure there was no bad guy in there. Actually had the gun to go in my front door. So I want to thank them for their bravery. They didn't know what was gonna happen when they went in my house. You know, they're brave men and women who work for, for the department. They deserved to get a COLA since the township refuses to give them one while they're active. I'm gonna give them one when they're retired. You got ten million dollar excess, no, that doesn't win the pension. You can find money somewhere or better yet, get somebody else to re-manage this pension claim. By the way, TJ, your cousin Chris Kaufman says to say hello. Thank you.
So just so I can be sure, we need speed humps on some street in some neighborhood in East Orange Township.
Five, five knows, five knows where I live.
Well, for the record, I need to know where it is.
All right, the whole area on the other side of Colston, yeah, on the other side of Colston. They just blow right straight into the, yeah, your coal mound. They just blow through there like it's not there. And I don't have a lot of finding ways to sit up there because I'm not gonna sit there, snap pictures and snap pictures the license plates. I've been a law practice throughout, but it's absolutely absurd what they're gonna get through. And I realize your officers don't have the time to sit there and take everybody who goes through. I've seen them doing that in Colston and they're good at what they do, but hey, better things to do than, you know, manage the stop signs in our township. You know, they need to be out there patrolling a little bit for bad guys, you know, like the goofballs, that the gang gangers, if they call it, up in, at bowling alley. Thank you.
They do the same thing, need the same thing on the pension board. It puts the top five up.
Before we continue, I just have another clarification question because a few, a few of our residents have cited that current officers do not receive a COLA, but it's my understanding that they receive a merit increase or a cost of living increase in their salary every year. And that is part of the agreement we will keep. Okay, so if there's, if something else was meant, just help me understand.
All right, well, first of all, COLA is different than that merit increase. A COLA is a percentage and it kicks in once, once a year, usually once every contract term. It has to be very specific. And I believe you all have to pass some ordinance to even do that. Can't just get it. All right, there's a lot of other things that have to be done, require ordinance, but we're not here for that.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Hi, I just want to thank you for your interest.
Could you give your name and that?
Yes, my name's Marty Fallon, PhD, L.A. and I live at three fifty Hancock Gattinow. And I just want to, sure, I don't know that gentleman, but I agree with him because I live in Colston area too and people run by there. Unfortunately, I'm here to complain, but it's a concern because of my mental health. It's a, it's a noise complaint. For three years, I've been a resident here for thirty-five years and it's been wonderful, okay, no complaints. But in the last three years, we've had a noise complaint that a motorcycle, uh, at the, the old Penn Dodd driver's exam, they have a program now. It's not the motorcycles, it's the guy yelling, "Pile down, pile down."
You can hear that from your house?
I can hear that. I, we have, okay, so, I have three houses in from Sweden, okay, right across from there. It, the motorcycles, it's like radio noise, no problem. But honestly, it's obnoxious, it's gonna be, yelling at these people who are driving around who have helmets on and making noise. So he's had, had to yell pretty loud. Last, this is for about two, three years now, okay? Last year, I actually called him one of your officers to maybe address the situation, okay? He said that there was no, he didn't have jurisdiction because it's Penn, Pennsylvania state property. But he figured he'd help me out, okay? And he went over there and he addressed it. I think he talked him, talked the gentleman out of using a megaphone, okay? Which is great, okay? And it really, it made it better, better, but it's still there. The problem is, they come home from work, come to relax in your dorm, and that's when they do it. They do it after work. They did all bothers me, oh, okay? And I'm just trying to sit there, I can, it's just, it's just tragic enough, it really does. Now, I can't believe that people on Norris City Avenue don't hear it also. So I, I don't like to complain unless I have a solution to a problem, okay? I said, in this techno- technology age, why don't they have a Bluetooth where they could talk to them, okay? And that's what brought my darling wife, I have, I have things that cost, they can rent these, okay? They can buy them and rent them to their company. I don't know who's in charge of doing something to that or investigating what they can do for me, but honestly, for my sanity and for the neighbor's sanity, if you do something about it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Matter of fact, I just told him Sunday morning that I had a cop or I was going down the road, it's Norris City Avenue from Sweden.
Yeah, they were there when I drove from here.
Yeah, so I, I.
And I, by the way, also personally addressed it to him and I gave my phone number, there's two people, there's a woman and a man there. And the gentleman, you know, horse like a drill, like a drill sergeant, and he was over with the motorcycle and I talked to her, had this conversation, I didn't want to, you know, be confrontational, I just said, we forgot, say, faced the other direction, at least. So I also want to make it move down to the lower part so they're just yelling into the park, you know, the, the lower part. They're up in a high plateau, it's.
The point, yes. Go to the park. Thank you.
Anyway, I don't, I don't, I'm not, it looks like I'm not sure what apartment we have, but I will try to go over there and explain.
The one question, the one question is, is it enclosed, right? So are they just using it as a, is it a school that's using it?
What I think they use it for is, there's a course, a certification course for motorcycles from the state.
Is it a state?
I would choke the course and it's a certification, so that's why.
I believe that they're actually California based, so, you know, the, the company and then they're.
What time does it end?
I don't know what time's it at.
Does it go till ten o'clock at night?
Oh, no.
I just had to ask.
But it's like prime time, like after work. Saturday when you're gardening, it's terrible.
I will stop over there after work, I'm on a Saturday, I don't have a time like that. Yeah, if you want to do that with me.
They train you or then you need to drop you, you need a license.
Honestly, I don't know why they have to yell it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dick Stevens, I'm a retired police officer from East Orange thirty-one years ago. So I've been out of the, when I retired, I mean, you generally around East Orange, I don't think, but whatever, when I retired, I retired at my pay, okay, at the time, which was probably about forty, forty thousand dollars a year. But when I went on Medicare at sixty-six years, my pension went down by forty thousand. So you can see wrong that. I got, you know, I had my social security now, but I'm really not making that much more money as a resort event. And I become, I came to town, I live in Florida now, but I'm up here visiting, I heard about this. And, you know, it's a big thing because these guys retired now, there's no social security offset, you know, pension, they're getting a full pension, but they get on social security and get that, that gets added to it. They're getting a lot more money than the old guys did. Diane Farrell is a jumping example, but a damn good friend of mine. That's what I have to say. That's why I was, it took me pretty hard, I didn't put a system that would step somehow, I don't care. But if I didn't, my wife didn't have a good job, I'd be out of the street now. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? All right, Bob, just go over what we talked about, or what we want to look at in the pension. Would be going, because we've, we've been talking about this, this is something, you know, we listened to.
The letter that was ready was very representative.
There's the retirement, right?
And that's kind of what, yeah, but. Yeah, we were looking at the options for, for the board. We do understand and we did look at, um, men and women who, most of men, officers who retired years ago and the differences and the challenges of those pensions as opposed to today's pensions. So we are looking at all of that. We already brought a bunch of information to the board. We continue to work with Dave Chris and we, again, like I said in the, in the email, if, if the board finds approved with this information, we will present certain options and we will be in touch. And especially if the retirement is, if you're the contact, that would be a help going because we don't.
Yeah, Dave, that would be good. We can run this stuff behind you with.
Yeah, so we're in that process. We just had the award, which I will talk about very shortly, the arbitration's over, but, um, yeah, so that's truly where we're at and we hope to have more information for your consideration in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So we appreciate your consideration and thank you very much. Now, we're glad to be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, no old business, we'll move on to new business.
Uh, escrow release number twelve for Bradford Point, I was calling in to hear from the supervisor. Thank you supervisor here. This is escrow release number twelve for twenty-three eleven Old Orange Church, Bradford Point. It is in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And following this release, there would be seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for renewal. Our listing expected the work and found the evidence that would obstruct it in accordance with the plans and we recommend this release.
Are there any questions from the board?
When will they be finished?
They're close. All that's left really is the top coat of the building and the landscaping and then I think they're still building some of the interiors in the last building, I'm not sure, but they're, they're close. Yeah, and they're probably eager to get the money.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, that being, I'd like to approve the escrow release number twelve from Bradford Point. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do I have a motion?
Thank you supervisor Barrett, second.
Second.
Second supervisor DeSanto, all favor. I oppose, motion passed.
Authorization to advertise request for proposal for audit services. I'd like to call our finance director, Mr. Chris, to review this.
Thank you supervisor DeMann. The township is in the final year of a lobbying contract with B. Bergwall and Company. The current contract with them was issued back in twenty nineteen, it was a three-year contract, contract with two option years. We're now in the second of those option years. B. Bergwall and Company is a highly qualified firm, they've worked out very well for us over the last several years. But it's been our practice and it's very prudent to, at the end of these contracts, to go out for competitive bidding to make sure that we're getting the best quality service at the most competitive pricing. So what we're asking tonight is authorization from the board for the township to issue an RFP, a request for proposal, to interested firms to perform the annual financial audit of the township records. We plan again to ask for a three-year contract with two option years. So I'd be glad to answer any questions my dad.
Are there any questions for the board?
I believe you just said it, but our current contract was the same term. It was three years with an option to renew for two.
That's correct.
And so we just finished five years.
Correct, exactly. So you're looking for another three years. The idea would be for three plus two option years, so it would be for five, I believe.
All right, well, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the authorization to advertise for the RFP for the audit services for two plus, three plus another two years. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll put that forward.
Thank you supervisor DeSanto, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by supervisor DePiero, all favor.
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm with Gary.
Next we have, I wish some of our residents had stayed because next we have authorization for township solicitor to oppose Aqua rate increase. I would like to first call upon the township manager Bob Hart to review this.
Thank you supervisor Barrett. It really is exactly what you just stated and what the gentleman spoke about. This is for that, this is in regards of a letter we've all received, not just in East Orange, everywhere, everywhere that has Aqua water or waste, source service. They are going in front of the PUC for another rate increase or attempting for another rate increase. We have to form, the board has to formally vote to send, authorize the solicitor to oppose that, officially oppose that increase. I will say recently, the last week or so, supervisor vice chair DeSanto and I met with Representative Bradford, we did a sort of discussions about this increase and we do know the legislature is looking at certain measures to deal with this as well. This is related but unrelated to our lawsuit on a primary issue, but it's easy to bring them together when you're talking about it, but this specifically tonight is just a stand up, so it's our office or solicitor to fight for the residents of East Orange Township against this second increase.
So seeking a lot of clarification tonight, thank you for bearing with me. It's not part of our existing lawsuit. It is not a new lawsuit. It is, I don't want to minimize it to say that it's more ceremonial in, in nature, but kind of like what, what does it set up for?
It's absolutely, absolutely more procedural. It's a process in front of the PUC, the PUC members, the, what happens is the utilities whatever, PGO operating, they have to go to the PUC, public utilities and, and request and prove their case. They do studies and there's a consumer advocate that gets involved and there's a whole sort of hearings process that goes on.
So this is just more evidence for the PUCs?
So this is, and I will say, we are one of hundreds and hundreds around the state right now that are joining this process. Now, does that mean we will actually get heard? Probably not. However, our argument is consistent with hundreds of others. So that's where we will be on this. And like I said, and truly the state legislature is absolutely keen to this situation and not, not happy with it. I know you may have seen Representative Cerise has done some videos on this. So there's a lot of action around us. Um, so we should know more as that goes through. Um, and I can say this, if, um, if it goes that way, we, if the PUC appeals, approves any kind of rate hike to Aqua, we are absolutely backed in front of you to vote to appeal it and whatever lawsuit or any legal action that can, um, be initiated, we will be asking for that authorization. But I'm going to get ahead of it, but that's, right now it's procedural. So you're right, it's not a lawsuit. It's truly the process in place must stay and we will follow the process accordingly.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize for the township solicitor to oppose Aqua rate increase. Okay, normally we don't, go ahead.
We need to come to the podium, sir.
Yeah, you have to come to the podium.
I'm trying to understand how you could charge more for taking your sewage out than bringing the water in since one is closely related to the other. You know, you get your water bill and they're matching it, trying to say that's your sewer bill. But if your water bill doesn't go up, how can Aqua have a larger stake in your pocket for your waste than what's coming in?
That's the same question we have.
So, and, and their theory is that the pipes that this goes into, and again, I'm not just great, I'm just listening. They say all are robbing out. They haven't been replaced in fifty years and we have to dig up, dig up every street or every area in the Commonwealth and replace it. That's where our, now, now, uh, I will give you a little bit of, um, what happened the last time at the PUC and which is why the legislature is so in agreement. When, um, East Norton, when they went in to raise East Norton, which they told us and they agreed to, they went in and asked, the PUC members gave them more than they asked for. That's almost unheard of. It makes everyone's stomach turn. Uh, it goes against every common sense or decency that we all agree. Uh, but I think we can all mutually agree with. Uh, and that's part of why we've gone to the legislature, our representatives and our filing suit for that particular. We, I think we all understand that you have to replace the pipes. We get that. However.
My second level question is, have we reached out to our congresspeople and things of this nature and gotten money from the government with, uh, you know, their handouts or whatever for all of these things? I mean, after all, two-on-two's been going on for like two years. I mean, that money is just doubling, doubling, doubling. So I'm just saying, where is, where is our legislature, quote-unquote, staying on all of this? And should we, should we write our congresspeople? Should we go bang on Matt, Matt's his name's door? I mean, yeah, you know, this is what I'm saying. Okay, I, I mean, do they know what's going on?
They, they absolutely know what's going on. They are absolutely have already had some changes that they have to pass and they're already talking about that. They talked to Supervisor.
We already know.
We are, we're already about planning down on this as far as, and that's, that's, that's one thing. Congress is a different deal. This is a state, this is very state.
Yeah, well, states, states.
Yeah, but we do know and we share our concern, which many others have as well, that justify what you need, don't. You know, it has to be looked at by the PUC in a very tight, analytical way. You sure as hell can't give more. I've never heard anybody that asks for twenty-nine hours and gets forty to do something, right? That's, you know, my grandmother maybe did that to me, but that's about it. Uh, so we are trying all, all of that. I absolutely, Representative Bradford is actually here in Bradford. He's one of the ones that's going to be more helpful with this. But they have to put things in place because, um, you're right, you can't pay more for it doesn't make sense.
And it doesn't, it doesn't turn anything to share your concerns with the other elected officials.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because there's also, uh, there's also some mandates that aren't funded, like the new PFAT thing where in the future, wastewater treatment plants will have to test for this, which is going to be increasing the amount to do that. The government's saying you have to do it, but they don't give you any money to do it.
Now, I'm just trying to understand this. Uh, PW has the wastewater treatment plant, is that it? That would go on Aqua controls?
No.
When Monastown goes down?
We actually retain ownership of the, uh, it's the East Norton Authority, Plymouth Whitening Sewer Authority. The only thing Aqua is, is the height and the rank.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't do that.
Yes.
And I don't, and I said it before, I, I don't like dumping people in the past before we were all ever thought about coming to a meeting, but for a variety of reasons, maybe very valid at the time. Decades went by with very little investment.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and so that is a problem. I mean, you know, and again, I don't know what their challenges were at the time, so I'm not.
But lastly, to cap on to the gentleman who was here earlier, now he said he had a well. How about he had a septic tank as well? Are you still going to charge him?
So I can tell you, there is, wells are, I know, a real.
I understand. But our township, well, if you have a septic tank, you're not using that as well. So you got to go in and go out of your own business and how is that treated by an operator?
Not enough.
Right now, right now, not, not, not well. Um.
You're asking the question.
There, there has to be a lot of work to be done with this. I'd say quite frankly, they're not used to, some townships around here have like no wells, right? And some have, the township I live in has, um, they, I'll tell you, I live very, very close. Um, fifteen years ago, the township said, we're forcing you to go off your well. True. And put in public, public order. I agree. We're going to pay for it and we're going to lean your property thirty thousand dollars for it. So my point is, this, this whole topic has been debated and people have felt aggrieved, rightly so, in so many ways. It's not perfect. There's a lot of work to do on it, but I know there's an effort because right now it's got out of hand. And to me, the issues with the PUC specifically, with the governor and others appointed in the PUC, it's time that they, they get control of that.
No, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, and we have a new governor, so I know, like, all these are prior appointments. So we're hoping there's some good changes coming. That's, that's our.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah. They put it on hold or something next year.
They did, they did. But there's a whole process that goes on that process.
So is there any other questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the authorization for town, for the township solicitor to oppose Aqua's rate increase.
I'll put that in the board.
Thank you Supervisor DeMannas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all favor.
Aye.
Post. Okay.
Remington and Vernon Engineering proposal for St. Mary's Creek Stormwater Infrastructure, Pacer Lane Portion, I'd like to call the township manager to review it.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, Santao. Um, this is actually good, I get to come up and discuss it with the rest. We have, like in a township, there's certain areas that deal with a lot of the resources. If you go down Pacer Lane, then Meadow Brook, and you come down from Hill, uh, Hillgrass Shopping Center, tremendous amount of former comes down, you know, they go downhill, a lot of issues there. We have received approximately three million, they, three million dollars in grants from the state to do with that for state, right? So we are absolutely, our, our reps came through on that big time. Um, what we have before you tonight is part of that project is the, uh, a proposal from Remington Vernon, one of our engineering firms, to do, um, two particular issues, construction plan, technical specifications and bidding for that very large project. Um, and that contract is for twenty-four, the amount of twenty-four thousand, um, twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars?
Four, twenty-four.
Okay, that's what I, I have it somewhere. Yeah. Okay, um, that is before you tonight, and that is for task one and task two of those services. We are getting very close to starting that project. They're long, long time companies and.
There's still a lot of problems with that in the past.
There's been a lot of problems. We lived, you, you, we lived, those houses in the block that have dealt with a lot of these issues. Um, we, and again, we are thankful to Representative Bradford and Senator Capelletti, who came through with a lot of money for this. Um, and there's a lot of people trying to get money for this and, and we were very fortunate to have it. So that was before you tonight, so this could take that next step to actually starting to get it done.
Okay. Any questions for the board? All right, now being, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Remington Vernon Engineering proposal for the St. Mary's Creek Stormwater Infrastructure, Pacer Lane Portion. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll put that in the formal motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all favor.
Aye.
What proposals? Next motion.
Approve changes to personnel policy. I'd like to call in township manager, Mr. Hart, to review this.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. Uh, before you deny some housekeeping, uh, issues with our, our policies that we're updating, reviewing. We have a lot of township handbook, but truly all of our policy procedures. Um, we don't really, very methodically. Uh, we took out the, the section on floppy disk, um, usage and storage. Uh, so we are updating it very thoroughly. Um, for the next month, two, three months, we're going to come back with such a few changes each month as we go through this. Um, some are very simple. Um, one of the four changes, total four changes, one of them is we're just changing how you work. You get paid for, you get so many days. We're going through so many hours. It's no more hours, it's just we're changing it to hours, as like many places have, you know, PTO hours. So, um, small things like that, separation. So for many years, East Norton Township and every township, if you retired, nobody ever retired on December thirty-first. Because if they waited until January first, they got all their vacation and personal days and then retired and got paid out. And they took home a nice check. We're not trying to hurt people, but we're, if you do it on January first, you'll get a pro rate. You get the first, you'll get twenty-five percent of it. So it'll be quarterly. Uh, so you won't walk out with a fifteen thousand dollar check just because you quit. Um, you know, uh, so that's where we're at now. So there's a common sense change. Others would change theirs as well. It just makes sense. I only say outside of, outside of government, that we never have it. So these are old practices that we're trying to jump into more physically sound policies. Um, the biggest change by far is the healthcare opt-out. We pay, like everywhere, everybody comes, uh, everybody from wherever you are is dealing with the healthcare explosion of prices. So right now, and here in every township and some private companies, if you choose not to take the insurance because your spouse has it, they'll give you a check of some sort to, to make you, incentivize you because it's so expensive. So this township since for thirty years, twenty, nineteen ninety-five, so however that, almost thirty years, um, has been giving five thousand thirty dollars to any, uh, employee who chooses not to take the insurance for a little family and give it to, and, and give it to spouses. We, uh, that was the nineteen ninety-five period. Because our prices are exploding, so a single person right now costs us approximately thirteen thousand dollars. A family, a company, costs us per family, per employee, forty-four to forty-six thousand dollars. So to get in line with all the townships that have, are trying to do this and make sense, we're learning from some of their experiences. We have a proposal in front of you to, for a family, if you choose to go with your spouse, we'll give you twelve thousand five hundred dollars big check, but it'll save us thirty-two thousand dollars by you going on your spouse's, um, policy. And that's where we're at because our, every year, we just go up six percent, eight percent, ten percent, twelve percent. It can't, it can't go on. You have other townships who have done something that I find, um, I know we feel the same way, um, very difficult handle. They stopped offering benefits to spouses and children. Other townships bordering us. Yeah. Pretty tough to get a job as a laborer out there busting your hump all day long, cutting grass or doing everything and your children can't get benefits or your, or your spouse. So we never want to go down that way, obviously, but we're trying to look at great hit ways to cut our costs and a few people that can sign up for this, and we pulled this around different employees here. We said, yeah, that would, that would be attractive to me to do this. We could save four or five people, we could be saving a hundred thousand dollars. So that's where we're at now, um, and that's what's before you tonight. And the rest, any other changes are just formality changes, they're nothing of substance. Uh, we will be coming back with a little, with other ones as we go, but that's really the big, and they're very important for our, our future because we've done pension reform, we've done all these things. Healthcare is that next, that next, uh, project.
So I have questions, but I have a comment, like I just want to congratulate the team for coming up with what I think is a great solution for the, the taxpayers as well as for the township employees. Um, by contrast, I just started a new job yesterday. My company, which is a, you know, well-fed private organization, actually charges a premium if your spouse is eligible for health insurance, but you choose to take the company health insurance instead of the spouse's plan. So, um, so we're still offering a very generous benefit, which is wonderful to be able to do.
Yeah, and, and listen, I do, I may be the spokesperson here, but it's a team, Dave and his staff. We're, you know, we're working on every, every situation we can to continue to attract strong talent, services, keep services up and growing, but containing our expenses the best we can. So we will continue to do that.
Any questions for the manager on this? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the change to personnel policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll put that in the formal motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all favor.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Okay, moving on. Um, then we've been talking about quite a bit tonight, approve the East Norton Act one-eleven arbitration award. And again, I'll call on Bob Hart to. Thank you.
Give us some water, not give us.
Uh, we're good, we're good.
Uh, yeah, I kind of wish some of our retirees had taken that, just to fully, fully get where we're, we're coming from. But, uh, we have, for the last fourteen months, we had been negotiating with our, uh, police officer union, our department even, for a new contract. We had just finishing a four-year contract. Um, we had been in long negotiations. We gave even nine proposals ourselves, very attractive proposals, um, could not get to an agreement, um, which the status or the, the next step that we're not coming to get to is finding arbitration. Um, and you, you know, you pay, you go, you get a hearing here, reload everybody in. Um, and then the arbitrator looks at it and finds out what he feels is he or she feels is fair or most reasonable, prepares it around, um, and then puts out the award, um, that we all have to reach it. So a ton of work, as you can imagine, because there's so many, so many things that go on. Uh, the award, I'll briefly go over some of the, what the, the award is. Um, five-year terms, that's not an award at all, based on that. Um, their raises, um, are twenty-twenty-four, they get a four and a quarter percent. Twenty-twenty-five, four and a quarter percent. Twenty-twenty-six, four percent. Twenty-seven, four percent. And twenty-eight, four percent.
Which all officers receive to acknowledge. Not only their continuing strong service, but also cost of living increases.
It's, it's truly a strong raise regardless of what the inflation is that year, they get it for, you know, so it's, and any of us that are in the workforce, four and a quarter percent is a strong, strong rate, um, especially a seventeen percent.
I haven't had four and a quarter in a very long time.
Right, right. I'm, I'm completely understood.
A long time.
Um, there is a, a small thing on if they happen to work Christmas Day or, or Thanksgiving Day, which is not me. We had actually offered more, but they turned it down and the arbitrator offered it less. Um, there was just some other basic things. They get forty hours of personal time. We offered forty-eight, an extra eight hours. The arbitrator said they agree with that. Um, there was no change in vacation or anything of that sort. There was no change in vacation or anything of that sort. Agreement leaves, something so small, we offered it, they wanted to be able to, if someone died, they wanted to be able to use their bereavement period of three days or five days, depending, they wanted to be able to use it six months later. I said, we can't, we can't even track that, so we have to use it within twenty days of, right? Is it twenty days, is that, yes, twenty, twenty days from the death of your loved one. We increased life insurance, accidental death for officers killed in, in duty. And we offered, and the board was very supportive of this, we did it throughout the township, but many places are looking. I'm going to use the correct terminology, the non-birthing spouse, some paternity leave, some leave. Again, try to say it right, because this is, but, yeah, the contract is two weeks for the non-birthing officer, what many of us would say, you know, the husband, we got two weeks of vacation, that when the birthing child, so that, that is in there. We also gave, put in an attendance bonus, and that they can qualify for. I would say this, most people probably don't realize, East Arm Police, a lot of police, they have unlimited sick time. So in, anywhere outside of police, unlimited sick, if I heard, you know, unlimited sick, I think, they make someone's, tell a story. In order to help people be healthy, if you do not miss days being sick throughout quarters, at the end of the year, you get a three hundred dollar check at the end of quarter, a three hundred dollar check, and a total at the end of the year. That's specifically to help people come in when they could take a sick day off. It's a difficult situation, obviously, many people don't take, don't take advantage of it, or don't take, or are not taking advantage of it. But there are times, I get it, it's sick, it's January, it's cold, rainy, you know, you don't want to go in, this gives an incentive that you can go in. And you'll actually go in at the end of the year.
Well, with, and importantly, with township benefits, the residents of the township benefit because there are not unplanned absences that the chief of office has to arrange for, overtime that must be paid for.
And the overtime, thank you, that's no, the overtime cost on that for the, for, I can't think of that, so, is a tremendous, tremendous thing. So this is something, like I said, it's, it's, we don't have a problem with it, I know Chief would tell you, we don't have a problem with people taking advantage of it now. But this is an opportunity to help you, because, listen, we're all human, and we're all not feeling all the time, and, you know, like I said, a rainy, a rainy Monday night in January, I get it, I fully, you know, we've all been there. So we want to give some little bonuses to people that just say, hey, I'm going to go in there and give it a little part, and it does help us on the backend with savings with overtime. And that is really the rest of our different, different situations, different procedural things that don't, they're not money, they're, you know, when you get a check, when you get paid this, when you get paid that, but that's really the award. We think it's absolutely a fair, very reasonable, very fair, a little women fair. Again, we went through a process, you know, it's, we offered a lot of different things to try to get there. We didn't come to a, an agreement, we had, we had hoped to try to do. But in front of you is the award, it is done for five years. What we're doing tonight is really formally, it's just your officially or formally accepting the award.
Okay, does the board have any questions on the? Okay, now being, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Eastern Orange Police Act one eleven arbitration award. Some of them, thank you, supervisor De Santa, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor De Fero, second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next we have tool truck air system purchase. I'm going to call on Hart to discuss that.
It sounds pretty exciting, I hope, that is exciting, supervisor Rivera. This is really where, outfitting, let me say this, we had planned and budgeted to buy a brand new truck for, for car use in Public Works. I'm really making this simple because it's not the most exciting game of life. Our, our head of Public Works and, and one of his, one of his trusted deputies, Timothy Espeilberg, in the back have, they, they truly, they think outside the box. They went and bought a truck, and was, and are really just refiguring it to do what we needed to do for probably half of what the truck would cost us, and this is outfitting it with this.
Compressor.
Yeah, compressor, yeah, that's really all of this, so, but at the end of the day, the savings are dramatic, and that's why I appreciate what they do every day.
Okay, are there any questions on this? All right, now being, I'd like to entertain a motion for the tool truck air system purchase.
I'll put that in a formal motion.
Okay, thank you, supervisor Gavanas, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, supervisor Rivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Monthly expenditures, May twenty-eighth through June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, calling, Vice Chair Mr. Chris.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santa. Presented to the board tonight are the township expenditures for the time period stated from May twenty-eighth, the date of our last meeting, through June twenty-fourth. For this meeting, totaling seven hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and two cents. The expenditures are broken out with our accounts payable expenditures, which include payments for utilities, supplies, and services. That totaled three hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Our payroll expenditures, which represent payments for salaries, wages, and taxes, totaled for that time period, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and eight, eighty-three cents. Again, the grand total for that time period, seven hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and two cents. Tonight, we're asking for the board's approval of those expenditures, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for the funding on that?
I've just noticed it's been kind of a late month, is there a particular reason for that?
There's not a particular reason, I can assure you that next month it'll be.
Oh, yeah. Sometimes it is.
Should I say, don't be surprised if next month it's fucked up to a certain point. Okay, any other questions? All right, now being, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the expenditures for May twenty-eighth through June twenty-fourth. I'll put that in a formal motion. Thank you, supervisor De Santa, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, supervisor Rivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Bob, you have anything to? Oh, I see, well, I'll make this, I think this, and just as a comment on the smaller expenses, this is what I was going to say. Dave was on vacation.
Exactly, it's lower.
So, so, it may not be any, or like.
It's funny, I was going to say Chief Brown was on.
Yes.
I hope you wrote that nice.
Yeah, I could have put this P R's in. I really, I don't have a lot of experience, because there's a lot of talk this, tonight about a lot of issues, I fully understand. Summer's going well, we've had, we have a great thing tomorrow night, or Friday night, I think they're there. A radio is going to be here, which is a lot of fun, I know. If you want to come out and see supervisor Gavanas, you know, cut some.
Well, I'd say, right.
Yeah.
That's his favorite.
I have some personal requests, I don't know if that's going to do it, but, but, so, we have a great, a great summer plan going here. I, I, but I want to take a second, when just for this, as we could talk about that, we've finished a long arbitration process. It can be, it can be frustrating, it can be, we can get mad at each other at different times, but like, like I've been met with two new officers before this meeting. I'm in my office for five minutes, and just wanted to tell them how, how much, how happy we are now, but how lucky they are in East Arm, how, how lucky, how fortunate they are to be working under the leadership of Chief Braden, Deputy Chief Douglas, and this new leadership team here, they are very fortunate, and I totally want them to be, young leaders, they grow into strong experienced leaders. We have a great team here, we have, they come in, they do things for the right reasons. None of us are prepared, I wouldn't say that, because we go through this, and trust me, during this process, I don't distract anyone too. But, but truly, they come in every day, and they're, we're out there when towns are tough, and people, you know, it may be, it may be a small, like I said, it may be a small issue to the police officer when they come out, because they dealt with it twenty times, but when that person, it's happening to that person, it's the most important thing in their life, they call nine-one-one, and our officers come there and do the right thing in comfort and protect. And it's just, we are truly blessed, and I just want to give them the recognition there, because we, we have a great township there, looking forward to the future.
Okay, any questions for our manager? Okay, review of meetings. So June twenty-sixth is the planning commission meeting, July ninth is the zoning commission board, July seventeenth is the planning commission meeting, July eighteenth is the human resource commission, July twenty-second is the historical advisory committee, and then July twenty-third is the board of supervisors. And as Mr. Hart said, Friday on June twenty-eighth is the concert of the park, A Radio. So is there any questions? Now being, citizens be heard, or anybody else say?
Yeah, you had a, I'm like. Not, not a word, but hopefully I'll have something soon, but literally, not one word since last meeting. If we were talking about the golf park and the, that's not, not one word.
I've looked around here, people always asking me.
Yeah, yeah, believe me, I do this, I can walk here, it's awesome.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, supervisor De Fero has something to say?
So I just wanted to take a moment to publicly announce that this is my last meeting. I was moving outside of the township effective July first. I wanted to thank the board and staff of Hart, Public Works, and the police department for their support the past seven years. Professionalism, kindness, both at the stairs and behind the scenes, have meant a great deal to me. So thank you very much for the time here, I'm going to treasure East Arm always. I lived here for forty-two years, all my life, and I raised all my babies here, so I'm very grateful. But I'm going to be close, so I wish for the neighbors, so thank you for your time.
And actually, I would like to thank you for being part of the board. I met you seven years ago, and it's been a pleasure, and you worked really hard for the board, and I wish you and your family good fortune.
You're going to be missed.
Yes, you are.
You're missed. My political Yang.
And I, I just would like to speak out, because you know, you've been through this before, I know that, or what happened back, they were going to honor you with a flag and jewelry service.
Yes, definitely.
And we'll say more then, but I, I will say on a personal, it's been an honor to serve you as manager, and you've been here, you've been, you've been not only a boss, and a guy, you've been, you've been, in many ways, the social conscience of, of this board for seven years. Not that it's easy, but you.
Yeah, what are you trying to say?
I'm trying to say.
She's leaving, you still have us to watch.
It's been an honor, and usual.
Okay, nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll put that in a formal motion.
Thank you, supervisor De Santa, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, supervisor Rivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.